Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee meeting of December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Before you, you have an agenda. May I have an approval, please?
Sure.
Have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We'll open up with public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll move forward on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, we, since we have just one week between our last school committee, I have abbreviated one, but I'll start with enrollment. Currently, the month, for the month of December, our enrollment is one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven. So we are up from three students from our last month's enrollment, which was as of November first, even though we presented it on November twenty-eighth. The difference between last month and this month happens with two fewer students at the elementary school, one more student at the intermediate school, no change at the middle school, and four new students at the high school. So that is how our enrollment is looking for now.
Okay.
All right, kids. So the next piece is the school calendar for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five, and it's located at the end of your packet, right prior, prior to the votes. You'll see it. Here. So we believe that this is the final draft, and hopefully next week, uh, next, excuse me, next week, next school committee meeting, we will be able to put it up for a vote. Some of the differences that have occurred since our last meeting in conversation with the department, excuse me, the district leadership team and the NTA, we have determined that we are going to have four professional development days in August because on October eleventh, when where we previously had the day set, we are not having the Cape and Islands Cape Cod Collaborative Professional Development Day. That has been moved to the November day, the November fifth. So for that reason, we have, we wanted to pull that day out of October and provide a regular learning day for students. And it's all, it's all a puzzle. It's, it's like putting together pieces to make sure everything fits correctly. So we decided that for this coming year, we would move back one professional development day into August, and then we would hold three vacation days in November for the Thanksgiving holiday, which is what we currently have this year. And then, based on the fact that Christmas and New Year's both occur on Wednesday, it is challenging to have just two days open, school open, and then close it back down for the weekend. And also, based on the fact that people would love to have a little extra travel time, we've determined to, to have two full vacation weeks from December twenty-third going through to January third and returning to school on January sixth. So by, by, by making these adjustments, that leaves us at our last day of school on June twenty-third, which is a little tricky because we will have to go to school for a full day after June nineteenth holiday and then return for a half day on Monday. So I know that that can be confusing. Unfortunately, the June nineteenth, Juneteenth holiday does fall in on a difficult day when it comes to school, final, you know, end of year dismissal. So, but we feel that this is pretty much set, and we're in a good place. So we hope to have your approval at our next meeting.
Okay, any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
And, and I know you said earlier this went through the NTA, but so that has gone to?
Yes, yes, we did confer with them, so. So I think we're in a good place there. And so we will continue, like I said, next, next meeting, we hope to put it up for a vote. Yes. So for additional updates, I wanted to take a minute to celebrate a person who's retiring, and that is Jennifer Erickson. Jen Erickson has been our tech director since two thousand and eighteen, where she came to us from the town of Nantucket. First, she was at, an info systems coordinator, if I'm correct, and that was with the town of Nantucket, and then moved to the police department in two thousand and four as an IT administrator. And there she was until Nantucket Public Schools were able to take her away and have her for ourselves as our tech director. Some of your accomplishments, Jen, have been shepherding the, the school system through a one-to-one program, which began in small steps and then moved very quickly as we needed to move everybody online during the pandemic. And that was quite a feat to do that in a very short amount of time. So congratulations to you. You also guided us through a pretty severe cyber attack last February, and that has been a challenge. But we did come out much better, not mu, not worse for wear, so to speak. So that was really important. And as a result of that, we had changed some of our processes and our, our, our protocols around security, and that's been important. So we thank you for, for helping us to get to that point. You have certainly changed many a password. You have fixed many a device by unplugging and plugging back in. And you have provided plenty of, of support to the district leadership team, but also leadership for your own tech team. And we appreciate, and school committee also appreciates what you've done for us for that. Although the never-ending battle with the NPS wireless still wages on, you have the opportunity to move into more enjoyable things, such as being a grandmother to Lily, excuse me, to Lydia. So we are so happy for you and so excited that you are moving on to your next, the next part of your life. Congratulations on your retirement. We will miss you very much. So thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay. You found it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, before you leave, I'd like to welcome you up for the last time for the budget presentation.
Yeah. Well, the first thing I wanted to do was do my kind of fiscal year twenty-four technology report. I've called it a special report just because it's in December, and normally it would be later in the year. Some of the things that we normally review, and as you know, I tend to go through this pretty quickly, is our tech team. Pretty much the same as last June, through the last presentation, and not too much movement of the positions. We still have techs in each school, along with a database administrator, and Morgan is our tech integrationist. Some of the accomplishments so far this year. Finally, we're able to get the auditorium upgraded. Thank God. That was, you know. We have brand-new speakers. We have a new sound system. Pro-EV came down and just kind of cleaned everything up and made it work really, really well.
That's, I think.
In addition, we have Dave DeForest, who's kind of a floater around here. He's able to support the auditorium and the various things that are going on in it. We are continuing to do updates to the wireless controller. The speed is looking really, really good. I believe all the schools are in good shape, except that high school is still having some issues that we're hoping to resolve in the next few weeks. We were able, with Martin's assistant, to get new interactive panels. We are waiting on getting those installed. So they're sitting, some of them, half of them are in the CPS front lobby waiting to get installed. We have a list of all the classrooms that had smartboards that were six or more years old. So those will be replaced. We've been working on the cybersecurity training using KnowBefore, which is what the town was using. We've implemented password changes and dual authentication for the teachers. We've been using our Morgan as our tech integrationist and expanding the resources that are available in the various locations. We have some resources in Schoology, some in a Google shared drive, and we're expanding those. And to reiterate, we try to provide a cheat sheet, one-page, very simple instructions for the old timers, one with screenshots for all the little people, and then videos for the younger people who prefer to watch them that way. And in addition, we were able to get laptops for the seniors this year. I won't go over the devices purchased. Suffice to say, now we are providing one-to-one with new devices in third grade, sixth grade, and ninth grade, and then those devices will track by the grade. I also was able to provide for Beth what I show as the technology needs projection for the next seven years. And this is just very kind of arbitrary, but it gives the school system an idea when Martin has to go to capital programming, and they're like, well, what are you doing for the next ten years? Technology is very, very fluid, but if we were to look at replacing things on the best life cycles, then this is how it would pan out through the years. The administrative functions that we've done all along. We use LineWise for our classroom monitoring and web filtering. Google Azure and Mozel are the programs or services that we use to manage the devices. Google is the Chromebooks. Azure is all the laptops, including for the seniors. And Mozel is managing all the iOS devices. In addition, we've recently been able to implement some management ser, managed services agreements. So we currently have a managed service agreement with Wally Computers for Networking. They're on a state contract, and they will, because we have an agreement with them, we get high-priority responses when we need things. We also set one up for our new virtual server environment and our Rubrik hardened backup system. So that's with Winslow Technologies. And then with B N M C, we have a managed service agreement to manage our Windows devices, Active Directory, and Azure for the teachers and seniors. We are still doing our ticketing and inventory system and working on that. And looking ahead, continuing to bring up the speed and reliability of the network and the wireless environment. We have quite a bit of old inventory to recycle, but I wanted to wait on getting the recycling company here until we have the smartboards taken down because they're so bulky and we have no place to store them. So that's kind of set up, and the company knows when we're ready to do that, they can come and take that away. Continue enhancing the educational technology component along with the cybersecurity training, and you will have a new tech director. So do you have any questions on that?
Questions?
No questions. The only question I have, this is how long I've been here, I can remember when the first whiteboards went in. So they're getting, are they getting exchanged for new whiteboards? Or is that technology not something we're using as much now?
So the original ones that were put up were a whiteboard, which some of them could also be used as a, a whiteboard that you would write on.
Yes.
With a projector. So at this point, only the sixth-grade wing and NIS are making use of the projectors, and they have a special kind of whiteboard with a magnetic coating on it so that you can use the touchscreen. All of the other projectors in all of the other classrooms have been removed. Between two thousand thirteen and two thousand nineteen, we were installing smartboards. The company was smart, and it would be an interactive panel with different colored pens.
Yeah.
And they can use the touch. Many of those, especially back to two thousand thirteen, are beyond useful life. They're starting to break or get inconsistent. The board actually wears out, so that places on the board you can't write on anymore. So over the last, for my tenure, I've been slowly moving in newer boards with, in theory, better technologies or advanced technologies. Four or five years ago, we got the clear touch panels. They came with all of the musical stuff that you could create on them. They came with all the scientific equations, like all of this was built into the board. We really didn't make use of all those fancy features, and they were pretty expensive. So in the most recent iteration, we started getting new line panels, a little more streamlined, not quite so fancy, but very, very reliable. And they come with the Droid software on them so that it's possible to connect to the Internet. Given our experience with cybersecurity issues, we try not to do that. We try to have everything connect through one of the laptops, so they're protected. And those are the devices, for example. One of them actually came with a special table. It's in the library of the high school. So that the board looks like a board, but the stand that it's on, you can actually lift it up, fold it down, and it creates four different accessible areas where four students could be using that table board at the same time. So they have the capability of doing some fun stuff, but we wanted to make them, keep the cost down and make them consistent. We were able to, at N E S, replace all of their old projector systems two years ago.
But they still have the projector? Oh, no, there's no projector. Okay, so we've moved on from that.
There may, there may be one or two remaining, and we're still in some of the areas, like the cafeteria. Since they just have a screen that pulls down.
Yeah.
We still have the projector, but.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, now on to the budget presentation. And this is Martin's standard presentation. I just made it kind of a slide. So as you can see, the, the upper right picture is Becky Hickman with a smartboard, and I can tell it's a smartboard because there's white around the edge of it with a TV next to it. And that's in the library on the CPS side. And then down below, you see the children at the elementary school with the iPads. The technology budget remains at three percent of the total budget for the school. And within the technology department budget payroll is at sixty percent. Software and hardware are at twenty-four. And the new service agreements, all put together, along with the professional services, make up eleven percent of the tech budget. Any questions on that? No, I'm sorry. So, and then when we go forward for our request for next year, we are increasing what we needed for professional services to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to include those managed service agreements. And also, for the hardware budget, we've increased it to two hundred thousand dollars to include the third-grade Chromebooks as a purchase so that third, third goes to fourth and fifth, sixth goes to seventh and eighth. We do that every year, and they move forward with the process.
I just interrupt you for a minute. When I was looking at this earlier, it occurred to me that I didn't see the community score split in your budget. And I know that your team spends a large amount of time managing their devices. So where does that fall under?
We support them. We have been able to provide specifications. A lot of what they're doing, especially down at fifty-sixth Center Street, is actually funded by Remain. Many of the devices that they're using within the offices, we are able to assist them with some of those. Some of them are kind of hand-me-downs, some of the laptops and stuff. Alicia and previous directors have built into the budget a little bit of an inventory rotation, similar to what we do in tech department for a lot of most people. And we support the network for them, too.
So there's not a huge cost out of your budget for that?
No. The, we do, the, the tax actually support, support them for, you know, what their needs.
Right.
So we've spent a little bit of time lately working down, getting the testing center at fifty-sixth Center along with the classroom, getting some of those upgrades working a little better. And recently, they asked for specifications for a server, so we're providing the specifications. And then Brian and Lanane, Brian, Lanane, and Alicia will work, I guess, with Remain or, or within their budget to see about replacing that testing server.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. The last thing I wanted to do before going to them is, Beth? And I have been trying to kind of finalize a, a statement from the tech's perspective of the one-to-one program. So within each school, within each school and within each of the handbooks, there is information about how tech is used within the school, which is appropriate for that school. But I, that you have the presentation, or you have the document in your packet, I just wanted to bring up some of the highlights of it. At this point, every student in grades K through twelve is assigned a school-issued device. Pre-K also is. They don't necessarily make use of, you know, for every single student. In addition, the special services department has many devices. All the students have a device available, but they have many specialized devices as, to use as communication tools, for example. The idea is going along with the federal guidelines that technology will enhance the learning environment for all students. And that was a mandate that was, I don't know, started in two thousand and twelve and evolved over the years. We do meet the federal guidelines as far as HERPA and SIPA and all of those. Along with that is the responsibilities of the students and the families of having that device. Our expectation is if they are taking them home, as they do in CPS and NHS, they're going to bring them to school, charged and ready to use. If they have a problem with them, they'll let us know or let a teacher know. And that's how the tech team works on the repairs for them. The, we provide use of email addresses and give them some. We don't, the tech department doesn't necessarily educate the students on the appropriate use of email, but they are getting a lot of that learning within the school, especially in the library here at these two schools. Some of the other things I wanted, they, they understand that their files are stored at Google. A little side note here, I, over the years, I get a lot of requests, why can't we work with the steamship and the high line for the athletes who get halfway over and they lose their connection? They can download all of their, whatever they're working on. If it's a file that they're working on, they can download that onto their device when they don't have connectivity. So that's something that they can learn how to do also. They shouldn't share their logins and passwords. They shouldn't roam their Chromebooks. And then there's the parent and guardian responsibilities. We have the orientations for especially the sixth graders. And we have a lot of the information embedded into the family connection, which they go in and they sign every year with any updates about their students. We also provide the acceptable use policy that they're signing off on, that kind of thing. They should, in theory, be monitoring student use and use Internet safety and digital citizenship responsibilities. Device guidelines, pretty much as, as I've stated before, using their at N P S K username and password when they're using a school-issued device, using Internet safety guidelines when they're in the school. They, we are going through our web filter, which is LineWise. Also, when they are outside of the school, if they are logged into their Google account, LineWise is monitoring their use, using, when they're using their Google account.
What if they're not signed into their Google?
On a Chromebook, you have to be signed in to your Google account. On the senior laptops, they are signed in using a Windows account that works that way. But since all of our classes are caught in Google, we're hopeful that they are logged in. Even if they're not, those devices have tools on them, like malware bytes that are monitoring the use of anything that's loaded onto that computer. So they are about as safe as we can get them at this point.
Yeah.
Email's supposed to be used for educational purposes. And then there is a discipline policy, but I defer to the individual schools on what that looks like because it is very different in each one of the schools. And then, just reiterating, the security that we have in place. For iPads, we use Mozel, which is a mobile device management or M D M. It's like a big dashboard that Marina uses, and she installs apps that way. So, for example, if a teacher in the kindergarten wants to have an app, a new app installed for either her class, her or his class, and/or the whole kindergarten class, Marina just says, okay, we'll push this out to those iPads. Only in five minutes, it shows up on all the iPads in that room. Similarly, Google handles the Chromebook on the app management console. Azure handles the Windows devices, and then all the devices are handled by the LineWise system. LineWise also includes that ClassWise, which is what the teachers can use to be looking at what each student is using, doing while logged in. So. So, but I just wanted you guys to know that, that it is kind of formalized and Beth and I have been working on that for a while. Okay?
Terrific.
And that's it.
Questions?
No questions. Thank you.
I do have a few. Um, thank you. How often are students required or encouraged to change their passwords throughout the school, if at all?
This is under discussion right now. Um, to meet with the federal guidelines, it has to be, um, more frequently than it is. We were hopeful to make it every three months to meet that criteria. Um, it's a little problematic when an entire school, you know, if they all start at the beginning of September, got their new devices, if every one of those kids has to have a password changed because it's not something that we allow them to change on their own.
Oh, gotcha.
It's not just like an adult, I'm going to hit Control Alt Delete and change my password. It's a little more granular than that.
Gotcha.
So we're trying to figure out the best way to roll that out. We'll probably do it by class with notifications of the teachers that are helping those students.
Okay, that's interesting. Okay. And then in the budget, it mentions seasonal tech staff? What, what year seasonal? How does that work?
So, um, in the summer, um, because three of the staff members are ten months.
Oh, okay.
And we have to review all of the classrooms, all of the Windows machines that the teachers have left behind. And then many of the Chromebooks that are in, need some state of repair and all the iPads need to be wiped and reset. So, um, during the year, we have the Nantucky program. We also this year have the School to Career program that we have some kids that want to participate and they're working in the tech office. So once they've participated in those programs, then I hire them as interns for the summer and pay them what the town pays their lowest-priced person. And they come in and they do all of that mass, you know, maintenance work. So it's an internship program. Actually, Kevin, are you in there?
Yeah.
Hi. Kevin is one of my rock stars. He was, um, he's been an, um, a Nantucky for a couple of years and then he's done the summer programs for a few years. And he graduated in June and now he's working with N C T V. And he's working with us. Um, we're a little short staff at the moment, so he's worth his help us. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin. What's the cost to replace, um, like the, the, uh, I guess the parent cost or family cost to replace a lost or broken device?
Um, right now, unless a device was broken maliciously, um, the costs generally are, if, if something is broken, it's, um, twenty-five dollars for the first time and thirty-five dollars after that.
Yep.
If the device is just completely lost, we may charge up to two hundred and fifty dollars if it's deemed, if they were deemed negligent. We haven't had that happen for the last couple of years. We get them, almost always get them back. We do have a lot of damages happening. The middle school kids are a little bit rougher on Chromebooks. They also think it's cool to tease each other and pull their keys off each other's Chromebooks, which is kind of irritating. But anyway, we don't necessarily charge for that because the Nantuckys are working and we can get those devices repaired. And we have enough of a surplus that we can just swap out, um, an identical device so that they can get right back to school. So, in addition, um, each of, in CPS, each classroom has five loner devices. So that if any child just forgot their Chromebook at home or something, they can go to each class, grab a Chromebook, participate. So.
Do we, do you guys use that, uh, you know, the find my, my Chromebook?
Um, we don't use Google Classroom anymore. LineWise can locate things, um, more by where was it last used?
Gotcha.
And Google, Google can look at who was the last person that logged in on it. So using those two tools, we can generally find things.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Like that in my house, everything. Bruno, any questions?
No.
Um, I have no questions, but I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you. Thank you for, thank you for all of your hours and hours and hours of hard work and your leadership will be sorely missed. And seeing our school in some very hot water, as Beth mentioned before, and your calm demeanor and your collaborative spirit and your leadership is to be applauded. And, and we couldn't have done it without you. So we will miss you. But I know, um, you've got some great cuddles coming over. And congratulations to your daughter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have Veritas' presentation. Whoops. Do we have?
Sorry.
We have Paige and Anna and Henry. Come on up. Oh, my God. Fooled me. It had Paige Martino on here.
She's here.
I know. I saw, I saw it.
But I'm not coming up.
Hello, welcome. Hello.
Hi.
Good evening.
Um, so we are the Veritas Newspaper. I'm the editor in chief. A lot of you guys know me. My name's Anna. And, um, Joan, our associate editor, was supposed to join us tonight, but she was not able to. Um, but I also have Henry here and he is our assistant editor in chief this year. And he's going to chat with you guys first. He's going to tell you about our paper cycle. So.
Sure. So, uh, we do a monthly paper. Um, we do two weeks of writing and two weeks of production where we lay it out and make sure the articles and the pictures and advertisements all go together. Um, so it's every month, we do two hundred copies per print and then we distribute to twenty locations, including the, the high school, the middle school, and then around town, like et cetera, and, um, the library. Most coffee shops will have our newspaper. Um, so this year we have seven new positions. We have a associate editor, which is Joan Harris, who could not make it. The website editor, because we're trying to get our website back up and more updated as we go through the year. A Spanish editor to translate articles because we know, um, a large part of our school doesn't have access to read long articles in English, so we're trying to make it more accessible. Um, a copy editor, a craft design editor, our social media manager, and our assistant photo editor to help out our photo editor. Um, we're happy because this is our longest, or our largest staff, excuse me, since COVID. We have fifteen people on board this year. And, uh, beyond the staff, we have thirty overall contributors who, uh, helped write articles. So.
That's great.
We're having a good year so far. Thank you, Pauline. Anna and I were able to go to the Nantucky Project and, uh, interview Tom Scott and Kate Brosnan. So we've had some good articles so far and we're looking forward to the rest of the year.
That's great. That's nice.
The Nantucky Project was definitely a highlight. Um, so, starting off the year, I have a couple of kind of goals that I'm, that I'm thinking about as editor. Um, before COVID, we used to enter a lot of, like, press, like, student press competitions, which is something that I'm going to work on, kind of getting going again. We were winning, like, scholastic awards every year. So I'm hoping to get us entered in a few more competitions this year so that we can get that going again. Um, we have, a couple of our departments are growing a lot. So our photo department right now has five photographers, where we used to have, like, one or two a lot of the time. So thanks to our photo editor, Archie's doing a great job. Um, our Spanish section, as, um, Patty talked about, is also back. We kind of had it a little bit, like, last year, but it wasn't as big as it is now. We're translating three to four articles an issue and we're hoping to translate more. My goal is to have eventually, like, all the articles translated, but I don't know what that would look like. Um, and we're working on kind of building the team of translators that we have because right now we only have one and that's Alondra Bearigan, and she's our Spanish editor. Um, and yeah, this year we're working on really revamping the website and our social media. And we are working on our advertising as well. So those are, yeah.
Great. Super. Shantel.
I have no questions. Thank you.
No questions. Just great work.
Great.
Bruno?
No questions. Thank you.
I will say that Tom Scott and Kate Brosnan both said that they were very, very impressed, um, with your interview. How you interviewed, the questions you asked, the conversation, they, they were highly impressed. And highly impressed with meeting the two of you as well. But I, I think, I don't know if they shared that with you, but I think that's important for you to know. That's great.
Thank you, guys.
But it's great. And it's great to know. I didn't know you were in twenty locations because, you know, when I'm not in the high school, we don't have a meeting in the, in the building, um, I rely on my husband to bring home a coffee. So now I know that it, because I don't see it, but maybe I'm just not looking for it. But it's good to know that it's in et cetera and the coffee shops and stuff too. That's great. And I look forward to your online presence again. So, thank you so much. It's great work.
Thank you.
And thank you, Paige.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to federal grants. Melissa, Devitt, and Barbara Cohen. I'm going to come up and join everybody up as well. Come on down. Always wanted to say that.
And then turn it over to my team colleagues. So, um, we'll be discussing our federal grants, um, for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. So the people who will be, um, joining, obviously Melissa Devitt, Director of Creative Humanities. She takes care of Title One, Two, and Four. Barbara Cohen, Director of English Learning Education, um, takes care of Title Three. Um, myself, um, I'm not in charge of ESAR, but I certainly am going to speak to it today. We are at the end of ESAR, so you'll hear just a little more, more about what we're doing to kind of close up that grant and what that grant, um, was allotted for. And then, um, Dr. Deborah Gately, um, Director of Special Services. She will talk to us about I D E A, which is the Special Education Grant. Um, we also included Sherri Lewis, but she, we actually are going to be removing this part because this is not considered a, a federal grant. It's a state grant. So we will ask Sherri to come back, um, with us, uh, at another time. So thank you so much, Sherri, for attending, but, uh, not, 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 not speaking, so to speak. So I'm going to turn this over to Melissa, who's going to walk us through, um, the title grants and the district strategies and the district improvement plans.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So the first couple of slides, um, on the top is our, our district initiatives, um, on the top. So the, oh, can't talk tonight. Strategic initiative, um, is listed on the top. And then, um, below that will show you everything that we are using in title funds to support those initiatives. So for, I am in charge of One, Two, and Four, and then Barbara is in charge of Three. So she will come up and talk about that. But mostly for, um, the ones that I'm managing, we look at summer school. And that's usually about a five-week period in the summer for the kids. And we also are looking at professional development, which is part of Title Three. But also Title One focuses on reading instruction. Title Three is for the L students and Title Four is for the S E L and behavior management. I think, I think, uh, she left me out. It was her last night. There we go. Got it. Um, so again, the strategic initiative on, on the top. And then this one is talking about mentoring. So right now we have thirty-seven new hires for educators this year. So all of those people get one-on-one mentors. So we are able to use the title funds to, um, use the stipends for those mentors. Um, and the last one is where Barbara is for the Title Three grant for parent engagement. And she engages the students and their parents, um, throughout the school year through the title funds. And this slide just pretty much gives you an outline of the title funds that are available. We are up from last year, so we have a little bit over a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, um, total for title funds. So that's one through four. One part of it is used for a salary for the literacy specialist at N I S. Also, um, their retirement is paid out of title funds. Um, twelve thousand dollars we have set aside for summer school coordinator, teachers, TAs, and stipends. And then we have about a little bit over sixteen thousand dollars for other expenses and professional services. So those can be consultant services. Also, we have to, um, provide funds for private schools if they accept that funding. And for this year, new for this year, we had to put money aside for homeless students.
And what does that provide?
For the homeless, we put that in transportation. Okay. And then, um, as I said before, the, but a little over thirty-one thousand is going to the mentoring stipends. And then for Title Four, we have, um, ten thousand dollars for responsive classroom. So responsive classroom is used throughout the school, um, in the elementary, both elementary buildings and the middle school. And I'll turn it over to Barbara.
Thanks, Melissa. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Nice to see you again. Um, so Title Three, the grant is also up a little bit this year, um, at fifty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-one. The bulk of that is used for summer school. They have one administrator and six full-time teachers. And, um, five thousand is used towards supplemental textbooks. For example, we were just able to purchase, um, books for the N I S library to support the multilingual learners there. So some books in Spanish, Portuguese, and Russian, I think. And, um, four thousand dollars toward membership subscriptions and stipends.
I will return. Um, one thing I wanted to mention about Title One, excuse me, I'm just going to flip back to the slide before. You'll see the total grant is one thousand, uh, one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. That is up almost a hundred thousand dollars. We, last year, we were at sixty-eight thousand. And the reason for this was, um, the census. The census, um, brought us down, uh, based on, um, the people who, um, uh, who answered the census and, um, the comparison with free and reduced lunch, which is where, um, Title One receives its data. So, that, so we were, we, we now have come back to the, um, the level that we were at before last year. And we are very thankful because that has, um, really filled, um, a lot of the spaces that were left, the gaps that were left open from that drop, um, in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, and then coming into two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three with a much lower amount. And then that went back to normal. So just wanted to mention that.
That's important. I mean, information.
Yes, it is very important. It has given us a lot of, of ability to, to do some important changes. So that was, that's great. We're very happy about that. And we hope it does not drop again. So. Um, I'm going to move us on to ESAR. So the ESAR grants were in, um, were, were all around, um, COVID nineteen and the pandemic. Um, ESAR had two grants that have, we've already fully expended, ESAR One and ESAR Two. And the, the remaining grant, ESAR Three, was the largest of the three. And it has to be expended by the end of this school year. So we are still, um, in the process of expending that grant. But the requirement for this grant, um, I won't read this, but I will show you. You'll see the highlighted parts here. Um, it has to go towards learning loss, evidence-based interventions, um, social and emotional academic needs, and, um, focusing on underserved student subgroups. So this has been, um, always the center of, of how we do our spending or how we've done spending with, um, ESAR Three. So to show you a little bit, um, this is not every single thing, but these are some of the highlighted pieces that we have, um, with ESAR Three expenditures. And I'm not going to read through them, but you will see a lot of this is around professional development, um, summer school professional development, um, supplies, educational supplies, like reading software. Um, obviously it's some parts around summer school, such as snacks and, and, and again, supplies, stipends as well. Um, so we've been able to expend quite a bit. We still have about two hundred thousand dollars to expend. So we will be, um, shifting some of that, uh, those expenditures from, um, supplies, which is what, um, when we were, were allotting the grants and, and, and writing the grants, basically, um, the, we didn't know what was going to happen. It was in COVID. So we were, we were doing what we thought we might need, not knowing where we would need to be. Um, so we are now able to make some adjustments and, and reallocate some of that funding back to professional development and professional services. So we're happy about that. Um, and I'm going to turn this over to Deb.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I am, uh, happy to be here to talk a little bit about the I D E A Federal Entitlement Grant. Um, I D E A, once again, Individual with Disability Education Act. And one of the things that this grant, um, provides us, there's actually two grants embedded within I D A. One of its our two forty grant and one of it is two sixty-two, which is specifically designed for students in their early childhood program. Um, and we are allocated our money each year based on the number of students that we have enrolled within our programs and it's reflective to the, um, the money is reflective to that number of students. One of the other considerations is that, um, we have, in the three years that I've been here, we've had an increase in the grant every year. And it's not always necessarily accounted for the number of kids. We've stayed pretty stagnant with regards to the number. We've stayed pretty stagnant with regards to the number of students enrolled. In the past two years, we had done a jump from post-COVID. But one of the other considerations is that last year, during fiscal year twenty-three, we actually had some similar to ESAR. We had American Rescue Plan money that we were able to do some other programs, support some other resources with. But we're still, in terms of what we had received for this year, it was still very manageable to provide for our students. Our grant this year is four hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and seventy-five, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. In terms of professional salaries, that is accountable for the mass teachers' retirement system. We have about a hundred and two thousand. The professional salaries that are non-MTRS, a hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six. Contracted services, we do a lot of contracting with outside providers. That's about at a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, just a little over twenty thousand dollars for supplies and materials. Other expenses, I specifically noted out of district transportation. And what that means is that part of our obligation with under, under IDEA is to support our families and students who do, who are placed at out-of-district schools, and we have to pay for them to get back and forth. Typically, out-of-district transportation would be us providing bus transportation for them to get to the school. But, you know, that's, our bus is a boat. So, we, we follow it that way. And then, we did receive an additional allocation of a little over forty-five hundred dollars as resolution funds for private schools. And the formula that's used for that is in accounting the number of students, Nantucket students that attend the private schools, and then commensurate to the number from one year to the next, and they adjust the number. And so, we received an additional forty-seven eighty-nine based on that number. And I work directly with the heads of school at both schools to be able to spend that money. And it's typically used for professional development, the notes. Again, for our early childhood special education grant, we, it's ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. We use it to fund a partial salary of about thirty percent to an early childhood teaching assistant within our program.
Can I just ask you, Deb?
Yeah.
How is that assessed? I mean, how do they come up with ten thousand for the early childhood? Is it on population?
Generally, it's based on population and the number of students within our programs. Yeah. But I will tell you that within our IDEA large grant, four hundred and seventy-thousand-dollar grant, the pre-K population is included within that as well. So, some of the positions that are funded by the larger grant serve as pre-K students.
I got you.
So, that's, it's, it's kind of, that's an extra piece for early childhood. I could allocate money in that grant for more resources, but we, we seem to be pretty set there, both in terms of the people. We, we are able to supplement that salary slightly. I did want to just go, and I apologize, but since we are the largest grant, I like to go in a little bit more detail of where this money is going to. New this year, we have committed about sixty-two thousand dollars to Orton Gillingham certification training. And if you have followed my presentations for the past couple of years in building our language-based learning disabled program within the district, we had a lot of trained teachers, and we are looking to go to strain certification, which is a ton of work for these teachers. We have twelve teachers currently enrolled from NIS, CPS, and NHS, including English-language learner teachers. And what is incredibly important is to share is the feedback that I've received from the teachers about how excited they are in being involved in this program. It's been really, really, as I said, it's a ton of work for these teachers, but they are reaping the benefits, and they're seeing the results pretty quickly. And all of our teachers that are enrolled in this training, they are currently beginning to start their practicum, which the trainer comes out to Nantucket and does the observations during the practicum. And it is about a year and a half to a two-year commitment these teachers are putting forth. So, we, we are excited. And for people looking in the future, we are looking to expand this into the elementary school for next year. Co-teaching professional development, just about six thousand dollars for teachers at CPS and NHS. And then, our professional salaries that we are able to fund, the grade-three IDSE teacher at NIS, four TA positions between NES and NIS, and again, the provision of private school services who qualify for special education. That number is currently at eleven students that we provide services for. The contractual services, we have a new IEP program that will be implemented in September of twenty-four, and we will be using some of the money for that. Our occupational therapist, which has been funded typically as a professional salary MTRS position, we have had to contract that out this year based on the lack of applicants. But I'm excited to report that she started today. So, we are ready to start with that. We continue to maintain our consultant from the Landmark School, who provides direct consultation to our teachers at NIS, CPS, and NHS. We have our behavioral consultant for the options program at NIS and CPS. And again, the private school services, we also contract out for those. Just about twenty thousand dollars for evaluation and assessment materials in structural and specialized technology and office supplies. And then again, I mentioned the eight thousand dollars for the transportation for our students in out-of-district. So, if you want to talk to them.
Do that, sure. Yes, thanks very much. All right. So, just in conclusion, a reminder that the title grants and the IDEA are ongoing grants, which means we are entitled to them every year. This is not something that ends, and we will be left with, you know, a gaping hole. So, we're very thankful for that. And obviously, much of that change is based on the funding that we allotted towards title grants from the federal government, and also around our, our enrollment and some other markers, federal markers that are looked at carefully. Our ESAR grants have allowed us to bring high-quality professional development focused on student achievement, but these grants are expiring by twenty-twenty-five. I said that they spent, they needed to be expended at the end of this year, but it's actually next year. Either, either way, we know there's a limit, and across the Commonwealth superintendents are concerned because it was a really important support, not only in the pandemic, but also coming back out of the pandemic. And a lot of us are talking about the ESAR cliff, meaning in some cases, we're going to drop down and not have that funding available. Nantucket is in a good place, and I feel very confident in our, in our finance director, helping us to make sure that we have the appropriate funding for what we need. But we have taken good advantage of the ESAR grants. As I said, in order to maintain the high quality of PD, we will need to increase our general fund budget lines to support continuing these professional development offerings across the district. So, that is something that you will hear about in our budget presentations coming up in the next few meetings. And finally, we will always continue to prioritize and align our district improvement plan strategic initiatives to our usage of title grants. It is important that we, that we keep our district improvement plan always at the forefront, and make sure that all funding is going towards improving and, and reaching our goals. So, that's it. Are there any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Chantel?
Yes, a few. For the, the transportation for, for unhoused students, how is that, how is it determined that that, those funds go towards transportation?
That's a good question. Do you have an answer to that, Deb, or no?
So, in terms of...
Sorry, Deb, do you mind coming back up?
Of course.
Because I have a question for you as well.
Sure.
Sorry. Thank you.
We're all good.
It's an important question.
Yes.
Yes. So, one of the, I am also the district homeless liaison. And so, one of the things that's tricky with students who are classified as unhoused, it's, it's first of all identifying them. We, we maintain a database for when students register, and when they share that with us, we know. And then, we directly take care of whatever they need to be able to get back and forth to school. So, typically, if they were not considered a, a bus student under their registered address, wherever they're living, we do that. So, that supplements some of that. The tricky part that we always face is then identifying and finding out, which we often do, oh, by the way, I'm living with so-and-so. And it's really, we straighten out that part of it to determine and, and, and adjust the status. And then, throughout the year, we have to then identify. I often get communications, well, oh, no, we're actually living downtown. Now, can we get the bus? So, we have to be able to pay for those students to be able to get transit. A lot of students at the upper middle school through high school that, that need our support, and they want to help us with that as well. So, we're looking at it from both angles at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just ask a follow-up on that same question?
Yeah.
Would one of the, because I'm still, I'm still sort of thinking, where does, how do you reimburse a student that doesn't have a home, or probably doesn't have, or if they're transporting on the bus?
Yeah.
Would you, would the grant support reimbursement for gas if students were picking that student up or transporting that student?
We, we, theoretically, because of liability issues that are involved with that, we try to provide the direct transportation to the student.
So, you would get them a taxi or something?
Well, if, if, depending on the time of year, we would get them a bus pass if we wanted to do something like that from the NRTA, or we would work with a variety of circumstances. We try to, we try to do a direct reimbursement or direct support to the student and not necessarily the people that are paying it. But we have, we have a lot of what I like to call angels among the island, where we have people that, you know, notify us of need and then automatically kind of come out with, if, if someone needs, you know, a food card, a grocery store card, or if we need somewhere to stay for a night, we react pretty fast on it. And people are, are, are amazing in their responses.
Don't go too far, please. Go ahead, keep going, Chantel, sorry.
Can, can, can you explain the, the resolution fund for private schools? I haven't really got that.
Sure. So, what ends up happening is from year to year, students who are qualified for special education services one year, if the number changes in the following year, they give us that additional money. So, if we have additional students that are identified.
So, the private schools give you...
No, 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 the, the federal government.
Okay.
Yeah. There's, the, they have simplified the grant management system this year, which has been wonderful. But it's still an incredibly complicated and detailed process to be able to account through the formula that they provide. One would just, you would think that, okay, we have eleven students, I can just put the number eleven down. But that's never the case. It's classifying a whole bunch of other things along the way. But we had, we had increased our number of students from eight to eleven. So, that's where that number came up.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so, it's really important for a lot of data accuracy and accounting that we maintain those numbers pretty accurately. And we also receive, part of that formula is also, I have to include our number of homeschool students as well, because any kind of homeschool, any students that are homeschooled are also qualified for services if they have previously qualified for special education.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No questions. Dr. Gaetley. So, the IDEA, IDEA grant, does that, is there somewhere that you also include parent education? As you were presenting, it just sort of could, I mean, occurred to me, and I know this firsthand, it's just, there's so much to learn.
Yeah.
And it's so, it's such a system to navigate. So, is this grant allowing us to...
So, let me tell you about that. So, it is not a federal grant that we received, but we were just awarded a state grant that will include parent education that I have to know yet. But Barbara and I, we'll be collaborating on some family nights to, there are so many changes that are going to be occurring at the state level with the new IEP form that's coming forward that will be required to some districts in the state have already implemented. We've done the slow adoption, and we've been doing the training for it. We'll be adopting that, the new IEP form, which is incredibly student-centered and focused, which I am thrilled about. And then, we'll be doing the new IEP management system at the same time. So, starting in the spring, we're going to be doing a couple of family engagement nights to bring families, provide childcare, and do all of that to, to start engaging families into what this all means. Special education is an incredibly complex business. And what I encourage our staff to remember when we hold meetings with parents is, parents want to know, how's my child doing? What do I need to do to help them? And how are you going to do it? That's like the basic premise that we work from. All the other complex laws and guidelines, like, that's my job, and I explain them as best as I can. But the, what we want to do is to make sure that our families feel comfortable about how we're managing their students' special education in those aspects. Yeah, so that is coming.
Well, I'm thrilled about that. You were talking about the Orton Gillingham, and it seems like, is that the only reading program that we're using or certifying?
Oh, no.
No?
No, 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 no. So, Orton Gillingham, again, when we qualify specialized reading programs within educational plans, we call them specialized reading or rules-based reading. So, we don't even name Orton Gillingham in our IEPs. What we have found in terms of the pattern of students that we've seen is that Orton Gillingham is one of the, it gets us the most bang for our buck, so to speak, in terms of addressing what students need. And again, since some of our general education staff is being trained in it, we're also finding the benefit for our English, multilingual learners to be able to look at how to strengthen that, strengthen their reading. But there are several reading programs within the district that are used. OG just happens to be, we also use Wilson, we use Fundations.
That's great. I thought you did, but that was, so, let me ask...
But for Orton Gillingham for that training, that's where we had to allocate. We pay for all of those other stuff. The foundations, materials are supplemented through building budgets.
Yeah. So, I know we have teachers probably still in the NES, maybe NIS, that were certified in Orton Gillingham years ago.
Yeah.
Is there a reset, or is there any refresher that they take, or...
Yep. So, those, so, some, most of our teachers, as it was discovered when we started planning for this, we, we actually had at the beginning of this year, two teachers who are fully certified in the district. Those teachers are participating in this training as part of their recertification, and will be building into, they're, they have a different set of requirements. The other ten teachers who had been, a few of them had been previously trained but not certified, they are all getting certified. So, the, the guideline within the state of Massachusetts is that you can administer OG curriculum if you're trained, and you don't need the full certification. But it's just, again, more beneficial for our teachers to be fully certified.
Super. And I, and just last, one last, is it an assumption that all the grants that everybody presented write those grants? You oversee that grant, but you write that grant as well?
Oh, yes. We all write the grants. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, excuse me, one second, let me get my papers. Okay, I'll get it together. Thank you so much.
Committee.
So, votes and, and votes to be taken, which I really want to find this. Thank you, Beth. So, may I have a approval, please, for the April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four to April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, a high school World War II European field trip? Summum. I have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that?
I don't know.
Other than I'd like to go.
Where exactly are they going?
I can share a little bit.
Didn't you chaperones?
I, I know. I can share a little bit. So, this is a trip that is being planned by the social studies department, and they will be looking at some important World War II sites in order to just build capacity, build learning for, for students.
Fabulous.
It's our first European trip in, since the pandemic. So, people are looking forward to it. They're very excited.
That's great. Yeah, it's, it's terrific. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have an approval, please, for the meeting minutes of October seventeenth?
Summum. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a approval, please, for the meeting minutes of November fourteenth?
Fourteenth or seventeenth?
Well, it says fourteenth online.
My apologies, through the chair. It was a typo. It should be the fourteenth.
Oh, okay.
Summum, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye.
Did you just, did you say this, in two thousand twenty-four or twenty-five?
For the trip.
Twenty-four.
For the trip, 24.
It's April 2025, not 24.
Oh.
Yeah.
Do we need a revote?
That's why they're calling it now, because then parents and students will have about 16 months, I think, to make payments. So it's April 2025, not 24.
Thank you. I can still make those dates, just so you know.
We do have a trip going in April. It's the Galapagos.
I can make that one, too. Sorry.
So we do have one for 2024, but this one, the European trip, is 2025.
Thank you. Then I'm going to re-go back for another vote, please. So may I have an approval for the April 17th, 2025 to April 26, 2025, high school trip for the World War II European field trip?
Summued, in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that clarification. Transfers and invoices, may I have an approval, please?
Summued.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You beat the gun there. All right. Subcommittee reports.
Did we skip that number 28?
That's crossed out, so is it not?
Sorry, we're looking at different things. Okay.
Yes.
That's correct.
Correct. It is crossed, it's good. Okay, so Subcommittee work roots. Anybody?
We're meeting tomorrow for DEI, and policy has been rescheduled till January 8th.
And we have a TA negotiation coming up on Friday.
Thursday.
Thursday, so I'm sorry. Yep, Thursday. I don't think I have anything else. No? Okay. Bruno, you're right.
So we have our first winter games this week. Swimming is on Thursday at 5:00 PM. It's home. We also have basketball, but it's off-aisle. Girls varsity basketball is playing MV Saturday, home. And girls varsity hockey, also Saturday, also MV, also home. On Saturday, we have December delight from nine to three, I mean, from 10 to three. And then next Monday, we have the dessert cabaret at six and at 7:30. So there are two sessions. And then the student council is planning holidays, just like a bunch of fun stuff, spirit week and those different days we do before holidays. And the holiday starts at the 22nd, so probably that week and the Friday before. And then that's it. And then boys varsity is next Tuesday, basketball.
The basketball.
Yes, also home. I think that's it. Mm-hmm.
Great. And then the FAFSA forms come out the end of December, don't they?
Yeah.
They're late this year. So there'll be a lot of.
So everyone's waiting for college for next year now.
Right. It's a little different this year. Well, thank you.
Of course.
I hope everyone can make the December delight. It's a lot of fun. For next meeting, our agenda, we'll be looking at the annual report.
We'll be, just sharing the annual report, which will be, have been submitted to town.
For that?
Yep.
And the Vocal Data presentation, what's that?
Vocal is a survey that's given to students through the MCAS. And we did have a presentation on that last year, but we didn't have the data because our students hadn't taken it. So we are going to, it's a new marker that will help us to understand climate. It's around climate and environment.
Was this what they're asked after they've just tested?
Yes.
Yes, we had a.
We had a discussion about that.
I remember about that. It's like, okay, not the best time.
No.
Okay. And then the student success, is that with Andrew Faselli?
Yes, that actually is going to be changed to January. But we do have some other things that we will be including on that meeting. One is the senior awards, the MAS and the NSDC awards will be presented. And we will be inviting students who have received the Abigail Adams Scholarship. So we'll see some students our next meeting, which is great. Aside from Bruno, who we're always having.
Terrific. Okay, so the next meeting is December 19th. I knew that. Any other comments before we adjourn? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved.
Moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody. And Dr. Gaetle, did you get together with the memo with Mrs. Kubisch there again? Or is that just?
So NES has a December spirit calendar. So for every single day, for the 15 days, we are doing something different. So today was wear red. Yesterday was dress like an athlete with the hustle and bustle of the season. And tomorrow is holiday or winter sock day.
Sock.
And they will really be present because they'll be outside of your pants. So everyone will be able to enjoy this.
I love it. I love it.
There's something different in every single day.
I love it.
There is always a 30% chance that we'll be dressed alike.
That was hysterical when I saw that. That was really.
They tell me.
Thank you, everyone.